Well, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission of February 9. I guess we'll do roll call with the assumption that Frank is going to join us at a later time.
Taking roll call.
Okay, sounds good. We want to, does anyone have any comments on the minutes or any revisions for the minutes?
No, well done.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Everyone agree to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Yeah, aye, okay. All right, minutes approved. And I guess what's next, correspondence, do we have any correspondence, Director Mismer?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no correspondence other than that related items on the agenda.
Okay. Any new business?
I don't think we have any new business, only old business.
Okay, so we're just doing the, I guess the old business is Libby presenting about the Shoreline Master Program?
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Libby, I'm awkward in knowing how to see Libby present the Shoreline Master Program.
No, thank you, thank you. Hi, good evening, everybody, I'm going to just go ahead and try to share my screen and see how that works. Can everybody see that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, it's good to be back here with you all this evening. I know it's been a while since we've all been together to talk about the Shoreline Master Program and the periodic update process. Our plan for tonight, or their suggested plan for this evening, is to go over a quick refresher about what the Shoreline Management Act is and what a Shoreline Master Program is. And then we will go over the current status of the overall periodic update process. We'll go over the Department of Ecology's initial determination on the proposed amendments to the SMP. And then we're going to go through the draft amendments that were proposed. And we already had a public comment period and a public hearing on those draft amendments. But we thought it would be important to go through those again, just to bring everybody up to speed. And then we'll talk about next steps in the process. And during this presentation, please, I'm going to be putting a lot of information out there. And so, and I'm not really, you know, the right level of detail, I'm not really sure of. So I would ask you just to stop me if you have questions, or if I'm going too slow, let me know. Or if I need to speed up, let me know. I would appreciate that. And then one other, actually, one other housekeeping item that I wanted to go over was, I wanted to put a plug in, can you see the website here on the screen? Yep, okay, thank you. For the city's website regarding the Shoreline Master Program periodic update, I know that there's been a lot of time that's gone by since we've talked about it last. But members of the public and planning commissioners, if you like, are able to go to this public webpage and take a look at previous meeting videos, documents that have been put out, the draft amendments, public comments and responses. So there's a wealth of information out and available for your perusal. And the address for that, well, you can go to annacortiswa.gov and go to the Planning Department. And then there should be a link to the SMP periodic update. So moving on. So the next couple of slides are going to be a little refresher about the Shoreline Management Act and the Shoreline Master Program. So what is the Shoreline Management Act? It is a state law that was ratified by the voters in 1972. And the statute is RCW Chapter 90.58. It provides a statewide framework for managing, accessing, and protecting Washington's shorelines. And the act requires cities and counties to develop Shoreline Master Programs to implement the act's policies. There are three basic goals and priorities of the Shoreline Management Act. The overarching goal is to prevent the inherent harm of an uncoordinated piecemeal development of the state's shorelines. And then the three basic policy areas are protection of the environmental resources of state shorelines, promoting public access and enjoyment opportunities, and giving priority to uses that require a shoreline location. And all Shoreline Master Program amendments must be consistent with these three basic policies. So where does the Shoreline Management Act apply? Applies in shoreline jurisdiction. And that includes shorelines of the state, which includes rivers and streams with a mean annual flow of more than 20 cubic feet per second, lakes that are 20 acres or larger, and all marine shorelines and shorelands that extend 200 feet landward from the ordinary high watermark and associated wetlands. And shorelines of statewide significance are areas where statewide interests take priority. And in our area, shorelines of statewide significance include the Salish Sea and areas lying waterward of the extreme low tide. So this graphic is pulled from some guidance on Ecology's website. And it's just showing shoreline jurisdiction includes, so here's the ordinary high watermark and then 200 feet back landward. So all this area is governed by the Shoreline Master Program and the SMA. And then all the waterward area as well. So this map is showing the approximate location of shoreline jurisdiction in the city of Anacortes. And it also shows the shoreline environment designations. And I know it's a little bit small, so it's kind of hard to see. This is a map that lives in the Shoreline Master Program. So in Anacortes, as I mentioned, shoreline jurisdiction includes all marine shorelines. So that's all of Burrows Bay, Flounder Bay, Gwamas Channel, around to Fidalgo Bay. And then there's a little section over here in Padilla Bay. And then also, there are some lakes in Anacortes that are subject to the Shoreline Management Act and our SMP. And those are Little Cranberry, Hart Lake, and Whistle Lake. And then there's a little portion of Lake Erie that has shoreline within city limits. And so that's also covered by the Anacortes Shoreline Master Program. So what is the Shoreline Master Program? It is local, it's a document that contains local land use policies and regulations that guide the use of shorelines. It's based on state law or the Shoreline Management Act. But it's really tailored to our local geographic and environmental conditions and existing development. And it's got three main parts. The policies establish the broad shoreline management directives that are the basis for the regulations. The regulations govern and establish standards for development on the city's shorelines. And then there is an administrative process piece that enacts the shoreline permitting system and enforcement of the SMA and the SMP. And then the Shoreline Master Program must be periodically reviewed and revised if needed. And that's what we're doing right now. And just to note here that the Department of Ecology does have ultimate approval authority of our Shoreline Master Program. So our Shoreline Master Program, what is in it? There are 12 chapters and two appendices. And I don't think I'll get into detail here, but it's got, probably the main elements are, that I use all the time in looking at permits, are the shoreline environments and associated policies and regulations. So that's where those shoreline environments that were shown on that map that we looked at, the regulations pertaining to those environments are in Chapter 5. The Environmental Protection General Regulations. And then Chapter 8 has specific use policies and development regulations. So uses of the shoreline, like commercial use or residential use, there are specific development regulations that apply to those types of uses. And shoreline modification policies and development regulations in Chapter 9 deal with standards for modification of the shoreline. So docks and piers, shoreline stabilization, structures, and things of that nature. There's our provisions for enforcement and penalties. Review amendments and adoption, there's a section that has just definitions. And then Appendix A has our current shoreline critical areas regulations. And those are a standalone set of critical areas regulations that are different from our GMA critical areas regulations, but very similar. And finally, there is a shoreline restoration plan in Appendix B. So that's kind of the overall layout of our SMP document. So the periodic update status. Again, why are we doing the update? The last comprehensive update was adopted in 2010. And that was really a major, a major update. The Shoreline Management Act requires periodic review and update if needed on an eight-year schedule. And the periodic updates are really not intended to be major updates. They're more looking at changes that need to be made for consistency with changes that have been made in the state law since the last adoption of the SMP. Or changes in local circumstances, changes to local plans and regulations, and new or improved data and information. So just making sure that the document is consistent with other plans that may have changed over time. So our update in Anacortes has been informed by a gap analysis. And that document was, it's on the website. And it was provided to the commission, I know it's been, it was quite a while ago, over a year ago. But that is sort of the document that has guided what updates are needed to the SMP. So it looks, it looked at mandatory and recommended changes per Department of Ecology's periodic review checklist. So the department puts out a checklist that identifies all of the state laws that have changed, you know, over, over the years since the last update. So our consultant, the Watershed Company, took a look through that and identified gaps in our existing SMP. And then changes for consistency with the comp plan and development regulations. Since the last SMP update in 2010, we've had a lot of changes, a lot of updates of our other planning documents, like our 2016 comprehensive plan update, the 2019 development regulations update. And then more recently in 2021, the critical areas regulations were updated. The Anacortes's update also includes changes to address local circumstances and to improve clarity and administration. So a timeline of where, what's already been done in this update process. Just a reminder of where we've been. So in September 2019, that's when we really kicked off the process. We launched a webpage on the city's website, which I showed you earlier with information about the update. We held an open house on October 30, 2019, pre-COVID. And then we held our second open house online because it's March 2020. And that's kind of when everything headed south with being able to have in-person meetings. In July through October 2020, the Planning Commission met several times, I think it was three or four times, in work sessions to go over the proposed amendments in the first draft. And then on November 18, 2020, draft one of the proposed amendments was published for public review and comment. And a CIPA determination of nonsignificance was issued. On December 9, 2020, the Planning Commission held a joint public hearing with the Department of Ecology. And on December 18, 2020, that was the end of the joint public comment period. And between that time and when staff submitted the initial, submittal to Ecology, staff and the consultant were working on compiling all of the public comments that were received, written comments and oral comments at the public hearing. And taking a look at those, summarizing them, and providing responses to them, looking at what changes might need to be made to the proposal in response to those comments. And then we submitted all that material to the Department of Ecology for their initial determination. And Ecology issued their initial determination on October 21, 2021. And now here we are on February 9, updating the Planning Commission on these activities. The submittal of the proposed amendments to DOE, or Department of Ecology, for an initial determination is a required step in the optional joint periodic review process. It's an opportunity for Ecology to identify any issues that need to be addressed before the city goes through its entire local adoption process. So it gives us an opportunity to kind of work out those issues before we get too far along. And the Department of Ecology issued a determination that the first draft of the proposed amendments are consistent with the policy and standards of the Shoreline Management Act and SMP guidelines, subject to a couple of required changes. And staff recommends incorporating all of Department of Ecology's mandatory and recommended changes. And I, with your packet for the meeting in January that we had to cancel, I included a copy of Ecology's initial determination and then a matrix, a table that showed all of the required and recommended changes. Some of the key points in Ecology's determination, the required changes for consistency with the Shoreline Management Act policies and SMP guidelines, included some changes to Chapter 5, Shoreline Environment Policies and Regulations, to ensure that harbor areas are reserved for water-dependent and water-related uses. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Excuse me. And there were some additional required changes, mostly in Chapter 6, Environment. And those were intended to clarify the applicable critical areas provisions and procedures that are consistent with the Shoreline Management Act. And also Ecology required that we exclude the stream buffer averaging allowances from our GMA critical areas from incorporation by reference into the SMP. Some of the recommended changes that Ecology suggested were to include fixed conveyors and height exceptions. And not, excuse me, and to not require that height exception requests meet variance criteria for, for those requests. There were quite a few suggestions for rewording of various provisions for clarity, which staff, which staff agrees with. And then also quite a few recommended changes that have to do with integration of our critical areas regulations into the SMP. So this is that first one that I talked about. And it has to do with that area along Gwamas Channel, this is Gwamas Channel, oh, sorry. Can you see my pointer when I'm pointing?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So the first, you may recall that the first draft of the proposed amendments, we had, there was a proposal to change the shoreline environment designation of this section here from urban to shoreline residential. And the purpose of that change was to make the designation consistent with the underlying, the future land use plans in the city's comprehensive plan called for residential designation there. So there was an inconsistency between the comprehensive plan designation and the shoreline environment designation. So just for some additional context, oh, there we go, change to, change urban to shoreline residential. I've been playing with animations lately, so hopefully they'll all work. So this red dotted line here is showing the Anacortes Harbor area. And that is, Anacortes's harbor area is one of 27 constitutionally established harbor areas in Washington State. And they're established under Article 15 of the state constitution. And they are required to be reserved for landings, wharves, streets, and other conveniences of navigation and commerce. And this shoreline area is also home to two of these former cannery structures that sit partially over state aquatic-owned lands that are managed by the Department of Ecology on behalf of the people of Washington State. So these, these portions of these structures are leased by Department of Natural Resources to the folks that are using those structures for water-dependent and water-related uses. So the Department of Ecology expressed some concerns about how the proposed change to shoreline residential of this section would impact the continued use of the Anacortes Harbor area for those priority uses, water-dependent, water-related, and commerce uses. And we also received a couple of comments from the property owners and also from the Port of Anacortes with concerns about the impact of that change. And we also received comments from folks that live in the Upland neighborhood and others who were supportive of the change. So the Department of Ecology found that in order for that proposed shoreline environment designation to be consistent with the Shoreline Management Act provisions for ensuring that the harbor area is maintained and reserved for water-dependent and water-related uses, they said that we needed to address that issue.
Libby, before you leave this slide, I have a question.
Okay.
Is now a good time?
Yes, please.
So, you know, we've been over this and over this numerous times. I mean, I think I've been here since we started this. You mentioned that the reason why we want to change urban to shoreline residential is to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Which, which document takes precedence? The Shoreline Management Plan per DOE or the city's comprehensive plan? I mean, you know, because, because one could argue that maybe what we need to do is to maintain consistency with the Shoreline Management Plan, we need to change the comprehensive plan, right?
One could, yes, one could, could argue that. And I don't know that one takes precedent over the other. It's more local balancing of the different regulations and options and what works best for, for our community. If I can, in the next part, in the next slide, I'll talk about kind of the solution that staff proposed.
Go ahead, I don't want to.
And then we can discuss further. Oh, sorry, I had one more animation there. So these are the DNR leases over these structures on state-owned aquatic lands. So this is just a screenshot from the, the document from the Department of Ecology. We worked with the Department of Ecology to develop some proposed amendments to the shoreline residential environment designation policies and regulations. So this proposed change assumes that the designation will change from urban to shoreline residential. And the, what the amendments are really proposed to do are to clarify the standards and eliminate barriers to development of accessory uses that are supportive of those existing overwater, use of those existing overwater structures. So what we talked to Ecology and the Department of Natural Resources about was that they wanted to make sure that the change in the code wasn't going to have the effect of making it so that those current uses could no longer continue or, you know, continue to be economically viable. And so we think that this proposal to add the policy about allowing other accessory uses subordinate and incidental to water-oriented uses when adjacent to existing overwater structures within this very specific area between H Avenue and B Avenue, along with the supporting development regulations, will meet everyone's purposes, we believe. So the, the proposed language of the accessory structures, or excuse me, DR 5.9.11, talks about allowances for accessory uses that are necessary to support water-oriented use of those existing overwater structures. So we haven't heard any proposal for what that, that might be. But we were thinking, you know, it might be some sort of accessory parking area or other small accessory structure to support those existing uses. And this provides some clarity as far as what standards would apply to those uses and structures. So they would need to demonstrably support, or excuse me, be subordinate and incidental to the permitted primary water-oriented use of the overwater structure and functionally support its activity. They need to be located on land under the same ownership or leasehold as the overwater structure. And they need to conform to all the applicable standards in Table 5.2, which is the development standards matrix, except that they would not be subject to the maximum impervious surface limits. And that's, the purpose of that is to not prohibit potential accessory parking in the future. And then also, the minimum, this establishes the minimum setback for non-water-dependent accessory uses at 25 feet instead of 60 feet, which is what the underlying shoreline residential environment would be. For accessory parking, there would need to be a public access use that provided for those accessory uses. And then letter E down here identifies a permit process for those accessory uses. They would need to follow the same permit process that's shown in the shoreline use modification matrix for the primary water-dependent or water-oriented use. So whatever use type, the supporting use or structure is, is supporting, whatever permit process would be required for that use is what would be required for the accessory use. Does that make sense? That was a lot. Are there any questions about that?
I mean, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of legalese here that I think make it unfortunately somewhat confusing. I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to get my arms around. So DOE has pushed back and said, hey, city, we would prefer that you keep this as an urban. urban designation. We, the city say, we would like to make it a shoreline residential designation for future developmental opportunities, I'm assuming. We don't, may not know what those are, but when I think shoreline residential, I'm thinking multifamily condos or something to that effect. And what the city is proposing now is that we would change, we would change what we can do under the shoreline residential to appease the DOE's concern of changing it from urban, because again, they're afraid of the, of encroaching upon the Anacortes Harbor area. Is that kind of in a nutshell what we're proposing here?
Yeah, sort of. I, I think that the Department of Ecology is not saying that they would rather have the urban designation. They're saying that they want to make sure that any change is consistent with the, that constitutionally established harbor area provisions, that this area is supposed to be reserved for certain types of uses. And they want to make sure that the change isn't going to prohibit or make it harder to continue conducting these, the uses of these existing overwater structures. So, and I don't think that the purpose of the change would be to, I, I very much doubt that there would be any sort of residential development activity along here, given the very small parcel width. The required setbacks from the shoreline would almost preclude that type of development. And then there is also the steep slope immediately, you know, pretty much right where this, the dividing line is here between the two of these. So in my opinion, it's, it's highly unlikely that any of that kind of development would be able to occur there.
As you say that, I'm thinking about San Juan Passage, but that's, yeah, okay. Okay. All right. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't want to slow things down. I, I think I understand now. And so what we're proposing is we change it to shoreline residential and we make the necessary changes so that DoD is comfortable with the Anacortes Harbor area.
That's, yeah, well said. Thank you. Are there any other questions on that one? Or comments, concerns? And the, and I was, I'm going to talk about this later, but because this proposed change wasn't included in the original document that went out for public comment, we'll be proposing that when we integrate these changes into the draft too, that we do have an additional public comment period to provide an opportunity for folks to comment on this change.
Hey, Libby, this is Jack, I have a, I'm sorry, to follow up with Jeff's question.
Yeah.
So I guess got to break this down in just real plain language, so I can, what's the width that we're talking about? You mentioned the parcel width. We're looking at this yellow band currently labeled urban. What's the width of this parcel? And what realistically could be done with it? I, I guess I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to get my head around, what's the point of friction? If that thing is so narrow and with setbacks from the shore that you couldn't use it for much anyway?
So there's only, can you, can you see my screen with the, I changed it to an interactive map? Okay. So there are actually only, I want to say, three parcels that would, that this change would apply to. So it's this one right here. I should get the, let me get the shoreline environment designations, and then I can measure. So that one is, that's like 42 feet. And that's probably the widest. Oh, no, I'm sorry. So here's, a little bit wider up here. That's about 69 feet across, guesstimate.
Okay.
So I.
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, and you know, none of us have a crystal ball for what development plans might be in the future, but I'm trying to get my head around, like, what could we realistically expect to put there for future growth? Because the setbacks that are going to be required in, it's already so, so narrow.
Isn't that also incredibly steep?
There, yeah. There are, there are quite a few limiting factors to, to any sort of future development there.
Is, is the, is the purpose just not to, to make those businesses non-conforming uses so that they, you know, don't get hemmed in by becoming a non-conforming use? Is that, is that the DOE's purpose?
Well, the, the existing businesses here that are located over the water, that's actually zoned, light manufacturing, so those would not, or, and, and the aquatic shoreline environment designation. So the overwater sections are zoned and have a different designation than the upland portion. So the portion we're talking about changing is just the upland portion. So the use type that would be allowed out here doesn't change at all based on these, or what would be allowed doesn't change based on these changes that are being proposed.
Libby, it's scary. Are we really just trying to accommodate parking? And especially with the reference to permeable surfaces, these, these tremendously narrow and with what is described as, and I must admit I did drive by the site, rather poor physical geography of the site to accommodate future growth and development, seems like we're, we're trying to fit, I don't know. It seems to be in conflict in terms of what the two positions are, and they don't really need to be in conflict, in my, in my mind.
Madam Chair, if I may, to help out a little, so when we first started our update with the Shoreline Master Program, we received several comments in regards to the shoreline residential and the underlying zoning. So the underlying residential zoning goes all the way to the ordinary high watermark, if I remember. And so with the urban designation of shoreline, that is inconsistent with the actual zoning. So the primary purpose is to provide some consistency with the underlying zoning and the Shoreline Master Program for each having the shoreline residential. And then the changes that were recommended by Ecology was to allow for certain pertinent structures, for instance, a storage shed, you know, something like that. One of the, the folks that are in the one cannery here, they've talked about maybe having a small platform upland to store crab toads, something like that. We've not heard anything about parking. And the area, as Libby mentioned, is so narrow, even as shoreline residential, by the time you look at the minimum setback in shoreline residential, which I believe is 50 feet, Libby?
I think it's 60.
60, I'm sorry, that's correct. It is 60 feet. So that would be towards the bottom of a bluff, and as everybody's mentioned, that bluff is very steep. So really, all we're looking at is just trying to get some consistency with the underlying zoning and the shoreline designation.
How does the, you know, the future plans for the Gwemas Trail fit into all this conversation?
So the, the Gwemas Channel Trail, if it were to go in, of course, that would be over private property down here in that area by the cannerys, and we would have to negotiate easements, secure all proper permitting, shoreline substantial development permit, Army Corps of Engineers, and WDFW permits. And so while this area is certainly, you know, thought of as being used for the Gwemas Channel Trail, we would have a long ways to go before we would be able to permit that, and mitigation requirements as well. So again, private property at this point, changing it to shoreline residential would not prohibit the trail.
Yeah, it would be permitted, as far as I understand, under either designation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Don. Anything else on that one? Move on? Okay. Okay, so we already talked about these proposed changes with, which Ecology is comfortable with. And now I'm going to start to talk about the first draft of the proposed amendments, which we, I think most of you, I think we might have a couple of new commissioners that did not go through that original initial process. Yeah. So I'm kind of, you know, trying to balance, you know, getting into the weeds versus being respectful of all of your time and not going too slow. So let me get right to it, having said that. So I, I was, I thought it might be helpful maybe to kind of break the proposed changes down into categories. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, the periodic update is looking at consistency with state law. So what are the changes that are needed to make the SMP come into, to be consistent with any changes that happen there? Integration of the city's critical areas regulations that were recently adopted into the shoreline master program. And also consistency with the comp plan and other development regulations. And then there are some other issues for consideration that don't necessarily fit into these other three buckets, but they were items that, you know, staff identified as needing clarification or some other change to help improve administration and clarity. Okay, so my plan is just to go through each chapter and identify the proposed changes. So Chapter 1 of the SMP, that's the introduction, and it contains these subsections. And the good news is there's really no changes proposed in Chapter 1. Just a global update to replace the term shall with some other appropriate plain language word is one of the overall proposed updates that is, you'll see that in every chapter. And then there are some updates that were made to the title of the Planning Director. It's the Planning Community and Economic Development Director, not just Planning Director. So just making sure that all of our terms and definitions are up to date. Chapter 2 includes the scope jurisdictions and jurisdiction and exemptions. And these are the subsections, including applicability and exemptions, and the SMP's relationship to other plans and regulations. So in that section, or excuse me, in Chapter 2, there are a couple of different changes. And this first one to Section 2.3 is adding a list of water bodies that are included in shoreline jurisdiction. So we have the map, but we're also adding the list with names of, of the lakes. And then that, that is to address some amended rules that Ecology made a while ago. Section 2.4 is a clarification added that activities that are exempt from critical areas review may still require a shoreline exemption permit or a shoreline substantial development permit. And that is just a clarifying item to make sure that folks understand that even though some, some sort of activity, like maybe trimming a tree along a shoreline, may be exempt from the critical areas regulations, if it's in shoreline jurisdiction, it's not going to be exempt from permitting, still needs to go through the shoreline permit process to look at no, no net loss of functions and values of shoreline resources. The next change here, the Washington State Office of Financial Management adjusts their cost threshold for substantial development permits, and they, they change that cost on a periodic basis, I think, to keep up with CPI, is that the right term? So that gets updated once every couple of years. So it's just changing 5,718 to $7,047. So this is the value at which if your project costs less than that and meets all of the exemption requirements, then you're, you're not required to go through the full shoreline substantial development permit process. Your project can be processed as an, as an exemption, or you get an exemption to that requirement to go through the full permitting process. And then the, these other ones here, oh, sorry, these other ones here are cost thresholds for replacement of docks in freshwater, fresh waters, which we don't see very many, if any, of those. Section 2.5 has a new section that is added to reflect rules that were adopted by Ecology in 2017. And those just clarify exemptions to the requirement to go through local review under the Shoreline Management Act. So there are certain projects that we do see in the city from time to time, like cleanup actions, Maka actions, remedial actions, and boatyard improvements to meet MPDES requirements. So those types of projects, while they must be consistent with our shoreline master program, they are not required to go through the local permitting process. And that's under the Shoreline Management Act. So that's adding that section just to clarify that. We're also adding a new section called moratoria authority, and that is added to reflect some changes that were made under the SMP, just saying that the city has the authority to adopt a moratorium control or other interim control under the RCW, and the process for doing that if, if needed. Oh, and I was going to mention, in, in the document, oops, these are just screenshots from the actual text changes document, and there are comments in the margins that have a, they, they correspond to that gap analysis, which contains more explanation about, you know, where the change is originating from and what the rationale is, just so, you know, you can kind of, if you want more detail on some of these, that's how you can kind of look that up. Or you can ask me. Okay, so Chapter 3, Administrative Provisions. So this is where all of the criteria for approval of conditional use permits, variances, and standards for non-conforming development, that's where all that lives here in Chapter So in Sections 3.7 and 3.8, we are adding some new sections called permit filing procedures and WashDOT permit procedures. And those changes are to reflect some Ecology amended rules, clarifying the permit filing procedures consistent with a 2011 statute, and also to reflect a 90-day, the WashDOT project procedures. The legislature adopted a target of a 90-day turnaround time for local review of, of WashDOT projects in shoreline jurisdiction. So that's just being added to our regulations to make sure everyone knows that that's the goal for, for review. So between the, when this first draft was made available for review, and now staff realized that we have, or, well, we knew that we had this, but we are looking at needing to take the existing administrative procedures in our municipal code in Chapter 18.16, and integrating them into this section, Chapter 3, Administrative Procedures. So it's mostly pulling over the application requirements and procedures, the review criteria for the different permit types, permit filing procedures, appeals, and permit revisions, so that all of the, that body of regulation is all in one, one place, makes sense from an administration perspective. So that's it for Chapter 3. So that's it for Chapter 3. And Chapter 4, these are required elements under the Shoreline Management Act for the city to include in our SMP. So the shoreline use, economic development, circulation, public access, recreational, conservation, restoration, and adaptive management, and the historical, cultural, scientific, and educational element. Oh, no, no changes proposed in Chapter 4. Chapter 5 includes the shoreline environments and associated policies and regulations. So this is, you know, we're just talking about the aquatic designation and shoreline residential and urban. This is where all of those, the policies for development in those areas and the actual regulations live. And then it also includes the permitted, basically the permitted use matrix that has all of the shoreline designations, along with all the different use types, and it shows what's allowed in each, in each designation, what types of uses. And then the development standards matrix, which talks about the maximum building height and setbacks and all of that good stuff. I'm sorry about my typo there. It also has the map showing the shoreline environment designations. Sorry, some of these slides are pretty busy. So the changes in Chapter 5 include Section 5.6 Aquatic, and the development regulations there are updated to include conditionally permitted uses. Let me see. And these changes are intended to modify the development regulations to allow for certain overwater aquaculture types of uses through a conditional use permit, shoreline conditional use permit, including on overwater structures, historic overwater structures. And this is really to address an interest that the city has seen in different aquaculture operations, like sea cucumber cultivation, that really create little to no waste byproducts and don't necessarily need to occupy beaches or fish pens or otherwise occur directly within the water or directly within the aquatic environment. So these are overwater aquaculture type uses. In Section 5.6, we've added a development regulation specifying that the reuse of historic structures for those aquaculture purposes must be consistent with some new specific use regulations that we've added in Section 8.4, which we'll get to here in a minute, and also the WAC provisions for aquaculture standards. And Section 5.8, the conservancy shoreline environment, there are some amendments to clarify how lot calculation should be made when looking at what the maximum impervious surface for a specific lot is. Before, it was just a little bit confusing about what, if you had a lot that had a steep slope, what part of the lot are you calculating slope for? Is it just the, for the average slope? Is it just the upland portion? Are you including the steeper slope? So this provides some clarity for staff and the public when we're, when we're looking at what that maximum is going to be for new, new development. So these are some changes in Sections 5.8, 5.9, and 5.10. And every shoreline environment designation section has a, at the very end, they have legal descriptions that match up with the actual locations on a map of these different designated areas. So when we change the shoreline environment designation somewhere, we have to also go in and update those legal descriptions to reflect that change. And so that's what all of these changes would be. And one of those areas would be the, the one that we've talked about, that Canary shoreline reach, and then there are a couple more. So this is the map that went along with the proposed amendments that show the three different areas where the shoreline environment designation is proposed to be changed. Okay, I guess I'm starting there. So Ship Harbor. This is located down by San Juan Passage. And the proposal here is to change the existing urban shoreline environment designation to just extend the, on the west side of Edward's Way, to extend the shoreline, the conservancy and shoreline residential designations. And the reason for that is because in 2019, or the 2016 and 2019, the future land use map was changed for this area from commercial marine to residential use to more closely reflect what's actually been developed within that, that area, San Juan Passage. And then the second proposed change is the Canaries area, which we already talked about. And then the third is down on Lake Erie. We had a permit come in a while ago for a new house, and we realized that that little area wasn't, didn't have a designation. And so this would update the map to show that it is designated conservancy. How's everybody doing? I'm more than halfway through. Just so you know. Okay, so Chapter 5, shoreline, and, okay, we're still in Chapter 5. So this is Section 5.9, which is the shoreline residential environment designation. And this is very similar to the, the previous change in the conservancy designation to clarify how impervious limits are to be calculated based on the percentage of slope. So that's just a clarifying change. Okay, so Section 5.10, urban, that is a proposed change to reflect new zoning regulations that have increased flexibility for residential uses that meet block frontage standards. So an example of where this would be effective, let's see, is in the urban shoreline environment designation within like a marine mixed use area along Fidalgo Bay. The code, the development regulations used to say that you couldn't have a ground floor residential use. You had to have, if you're going to have a residential use, you had to have it on top of a retail or commercial use. And through our develop, our comp plan update and our development regulation update, it has changed to provide a little more flexibility for residential development. And so this is changing this, this regulation here to say that yes, you can have ground floor residential, but it has to meet those zoning code block frontage standards. I'm sorry. Section 5.2. Shoreline Use and Modification Matrix. So this is just another, one of the proposed revisions to make sure that we are not putting the barriers up for the potential reuse of historic overwater structures for preferred uses. So this, this regulation, if, if someone was proposing a use within the aquatic environment that had more restrictive requirements for the upland, whatever the upland designation is, then they would have to use the upland designations, standards, and permitting processes. And this is saying that yes, that applies except when somebody wants to reuse overwater historic structures, which basically only applies to those two structures that we've been discussing down on the Grimace Channel shoreline. Okay, so this is our shoreline use and modification matrix, and there are some changes proposed. They're basically entailing some, some footnotes. There were some changes to address ecology's use regulations relating to forest practices, so, which we hardly ever see any of those, but there's a little footnote there. Number 6, just reflecting some updated ecology language about timber cutting. There is another footnote added under aquaculture in the aquatic use designation. And this is just referring somebody that's looking at this to know that some overwater aquaculture projects may be allowed as conditional in limited circumstances. And so it's saying, the X means no, they're not permitted, but hey, look at this footnote down here, some may be permitted through a conditional use permit in limited circumstances based on the provisions in Section 8.4. Sorry about that. And then parking facilities, this is another change, just to reflect that accessory parking in the shoreline residential designation requires a public access easement. Okay, so still in Chapter 5 with the, the maximum building height language. Before, there was sort of a mismatch between how building heights were calculated in shoreline jurisdiction versus everywhere else in the city. And so we've proposed some changes to more closely, or exactly mirror how that, how building height is calculated, what, what the method is for that, so that they are the same. Okay. So these are some changes to, again, some footnotes regarding excluding parking, accessory parking from the maximum impervious surface standards. And again, that goes along with intending to help preserve the harbor areas for water-dependent and water-related uses, supporting accessory and subordinate uses to those existing structures. And then there's some wordsmithing for clarifying that allowance, that buildings that are over 35 feet cannot be approved if they would obstruct the view of a substantial number of residents. And that is one of the regulations straight from the Shoreline Management Act. Okay, moving on to Chapter 6, Environmental Protection General Regulations. So most of the changes here are intended to make sure that the integration of the newly adopted critical areas regulations work well in shoreline jurisdiction. So the, we are proposing to, instead of having a standalone, separate set of critical areas regulations for, for shoreline areas like we do right now, we will instead incorporate by reference certain parts of the recently updated critical areas regulations into the shoreline master program. It's a little bit complicated and confusing on how that works. But we've been working with ecology on, on making sure that we're, we're getting it right, and they had some recommended changes for wording to just really make it clear which regulations apply and procedures apply within shoreline jurisdiction versus outside.
Hey Libby.
Yep.
I, I don't mean to be a pester, but could you go back two slides?
Two slides?
Yeah, the footnote about building height kind of flew by us. I mean, how does this, so if the shoreline management plan goes out to 200 feet from the high watermark, what, would this have any impact on the development going into the, the proposed development for the MJB project?
So the maximum height, and that would be the urban designation, would be 50 feet. So what it's saying is that, okay, yes, you can go up to 50 feet, but you need to show that you're not going to obstruct the view of a substantial number of residences. And there's some case law on that. But basically a view, a view analysis to show that, you know, you're not, you're not completely blocking somebody's view.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I don't think we necessarily need to dwell on this, but isn't that, isn't that MJB property that zone to go up as high as 65 feet with all of the bonus opportunity there? And, I mean, I think what's interesting is, is that obstruct the view of a substantial number of residents, you know, I'm thinking about the five-story apartment building and what that has caused the city and whether or not, you know, I don't know, it could, probably for another discussion perhaps? I don't know if we've got any, I mean, is there any recourse that we have if this footnote does become an issue for that development? Or, you know, Mr. Meesmer, is this just something for another conversation?
Well, Mr. Graff, actually, might as well have a conversation on it now. I'm very familiar with the MJB property. Within that 200-foot shoreline's jurisdiction, we have no option but to follow the Washington State Department of Ecology guidelines. And so that view corridor analysis is required if they want to exceed 35 feet. And, you know, typically, Department of Ecology works with the developers, works with the city, and in one case in past years, there was an appeal, and the, the appeal was held up, and they had to lower their buildings to 35 feet. So, you know, it's, it's, it's really something that's going to have to go through a process. Now, once we get outside of the 200-foot shoreline's jurisdiction, then you're right, those buildings and MJB property could be up to 65 feet with the criteria set forth in the development regulations to get there. But within that 200-foot shoreline's area, we're somewhat, shall we say, stuck in a box.
Yep, okay, no, I, I understand. And I, I do know that they've made some very detailed drawings with, with very specific view corridors, I think probably with this caveat or this footnote in mind. So, okay, it'll be interesting to see where this goes. Thank you. And again, I apologize for having you go back.
Oh, no, no problem at all. Want to make sure we're hitting all the issues.
Hi, Mr. Meesmer, this is Jack.
Hi.
So to follow up on Mr. Graff's question, I think he may have answered it, but I wanted to confirm, the view analysis, is that a very well-defined objective process, or is that, is that pretty subjective and left to the surveyor?
It's a very well-defined process. We've been through it five or six times since I've been with the city.
Thank you.
And to add, MJB is very familiar with this.
Okay, so moving on to Section 6.5, vegetation conservation in our environmental protection requirements. So Plan Commission had a little bit of discussion on this last time. And one of the changes that was integrated into the standards had to do with tree replacement requirements being revised to requiring conifer be at least five feet tall, or, sorry, revised from requiring conifers to be at least five feet tall to requiring that they be up to eight feet tall. And apparently, there's some best available science for And apparently, there's some best available science for tree replacement standards that says that making sure that they're not too tall when they're planted ensures better survival. So that was one of the changes. And also a requirement that subdivision of land not require significant vegetation removal. So we've added that, that standard there, so. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I guess it's not on this example that I provided. Sorry about that. And then the allowances for tree and vegetation trimming within shoreline setback via permit are clarified. And also, we added a few restrictions to even further limit what one might be able to do in terms of limbing trees and, and cutting down vegetation in order to preserve views. And we've also established that there is a permit review process associated with that type of activity to make sure that those types of proposals are in conformance with the SMP. And originally, we had looked at processing those through a shoreline exemption process, but, and discussing with ecology, because trimming of trees is not technically considered, doesn't meet the definition of development, it's not really appropriate to have them go through a process exempting them from the requirement to obtain a permit for substantial development. So we've looked at instead requiring a clearing and grading permit process for any of those types of requests. Okay, so I already talked about this a little bit, but chapter 6.6 is where the city's critical areas regulations, the updated ones, will be incorporated by reference, certain sections of that, nineteen, chapter 1970, critical areas. And this is a little bit outdated, I'm sorry. It says the city is revising the CIO concurrently with SMP, but that updates to the CIO, as you know, were adopted by council in July, I think it was July of 2021. So now that we have that ordinance number and date of adoption, those, that information will be inserted into the critical areas section of SMP. Sorry about that. And the rest of these are really just clarifying within the SMP, you know, where the critical areas regulations are adopted by reference or where there are specific standards that live only in the shoreline master program that apply to the specific, the specific area, critical area in question. So here's just an example of what it looks like in section 6.6.1. So this is where the CIO will be adopted. It says the city's critical areas regulations as adopted under ordinance, and I don't, we have a number now, we have a date, but we haven't inserted that yet. And AMC 1970 are hereby incorporated into this master program by reference. And then there's a list of sections of that, of those regulations that are actually excluded from being incorporated by reference. And that is because those sections are not consistent with the Shoreline Management Act. There are different, the SMP, the SMP has different procedures for like a reasonable use exception variance. Those types of projects, instead of going through that process, would be going through a shoreline variance process that goes to the Department of Ecology. So there are some different procedures within the Growth Management Act critical areas versus critical areas in the shoreline jurisdiction. And so these exclusions are just making sure that projects are going through the right permitting process and meeting the correct requirements. And this is more talking about updating references again to the, the critical areas regulations. And I don't have an example there. The first two shoreline-specific development regulations were, are rendered unnecessary by the CIO incorporation, so the CIO already has those particular regulations in it and we're incorporating that, so we didn't need to keep redundant regulations within the SMP. So I know that's really probably very confusing. So I hope I'm doing an okay job of explaining, but if, please stop me if not, I'll try, try harder. Chapter seven, shoreline public access. So there are no changes proposed except for global replacement of shell with some other appropriate term. Chapter eight is our specific use policies and development regulations. So this is where we're talking about specific types of development, commercial, industrial, marinas, mining, parking, and what are the specific policies and regulations applicable to those uses. So here in section 8.4, we have some changes to the policy and development regulations related to aquaculture. So we talked about that a little bit before. And then there are some changes based on some amendments to ecology's rules. I'm sorry, I don't have that reference here, but that's what all of these are. Standards for fish pens are deleted. A requirement that GUI deck aquaculture adhere to these specific standards is added. And then there are a lot of references to other codes being updated. And then here are those new standards for overwater aquaculture projects on overwater structures that we talked about. So basically, those are allowed through a shoreline conditional use permit. And then there are all of these different requirements that an applicant needs to provide evidence of. And the process would, or, excuse me, the application would go through the Planning Commission and then the Department of Ecology would make a final decision on, on those types of projects. Chapter nine, shoreline-specific modifications and development regulations. So here, we have just a few little changes in section 9.5, docks, piers, and floats. We're adding a specification that a pier width, pier width for a joint use dock is eight feet or less. And also clarifying revisions are made to the pile repair regulations. So how many piles can be replaced before a proposal is reviewed as a new pier or dock? And in looking at this, since the last time that, since the first draft and since the last time we've discussed this with Planning Commission, we've had quite a few applications come in for repair and maintenance and replacement of single-family residential docks in Skyline. I think it just must be the time, you know, they were all built maybe around the same time and now they all need to be repaired or maintained. And so we've noticed that we really could use some more clearer language about how much and what can be repaired before requiring a dock to come into conformance with the modern dimensional standards, which are quite a bit less than most of the docks that are out there. Almost all of the existing docks in Skyline that are accessory to single-family are, exceed these standards that would be required if you were building a new dock. So we want to just make sure that our, our requirements are not discouraging upgrades to materials. So we want to make sure that we're not, the process isn't so onerous to replace your three pilings with, you know, your three creosote pilings with steel pilings, that that doesn't require you to completely change the configuration of your dock and make it smaller to conform with these standards. And so we're working on some draft updates to just really make it clear and spell out for staff and for the property owners, you know, here's what you can do to repair and maintain without having to do these major upgrades. And so we'll provide those in the second draft when it comes out. Are there any questions or comments on that one? Chapter nine, okay, so these next ones are in response, oops, to comments from WDFW. They requested that they be added as an agency with knowledge on mooring buoys to that section related to mooring buoys. And 9.10, shoreline habitat and natural systems enhancement projects, we're adding an allowance for the city to be able to grant relief to certain standards and use regulations. And that is in, that reflects some changes to the state law, I believe. And then we received a comment, I think this was also from WDFW, to add dynamic revetment to the list of soft, soft shoreline stabilization, stabilization measures that are available for, for folks to consider. Chapter 10, enforcement and penalties, no changes proposed there. Chapter 11 covers the master program review and amendments and some other legal things, and there are no changes proposed there. Chapter 12 has definitions and there are a few, we went through and looked at the definitions in the SMP and found quite a few that were repetitive of definitions that we currently have in the development regulations or that were just slightly, slightly conflicting or different. So we went through and tried to clean those up. And we also went through and made sure that all of the shoreline-related definitions were consistent with the Shoreline Management Act and the guidance out there from the Department of Ecology. And then, of course, yeah, we deleted some of the repetitive definitions because you can sometimes get into trouble when you change one in one place and not in the other and end up with confusing and inconsistent definitions. So those are all shown in the, in the strike-through underline format in the draft document. Okay, I'm done going through all of the proposed changes. Thank you for sticking with me, I really appreciate it. Just one more section, unless somebody has any questions about those amendments we covered. And you can reach out after this meeting too, if, if that would be helpful. So one of the elements of this update is to actually physically integrate the components of our existing shoreline master program document, that book, into the comprehensive plan and Title 19 Unified Development Regulations. And so why would we do that? Well, because in 1995, the legislature adopted regulatory reform measures that included some Shoreline Management Act and Growth Management Act integration. So basically, they said, hey, if you have a shoreline master program, its policies are part of your comp plan and its regulations are technically part of your city's development regulations. So even though they live in this separate physical document, shoreline master program, they're still considered part of your comp plan and, and development regulations, if that makes sense. So to continue on with that integration, from staff's perspective, it makes sense to actually move the goals and policies that are in the SMP into a new shoreline element of our comprehensive plan and move the development regulations into Division 7 environment of our Anacortes Municipal Code Title 19, which is all of the rest of the Unified Development Code. And then the map would also be adopted, the shoreline environment designation map would also be adopted within this, this section. So that really makes sense to staff from an administration standpoint, you're only having to go into two different documents to, to look at policies. If you're doing a development, you only have to look in Title 19 Development Regulations to look at all of the applicable regulations that might apply to your development. You don't have to go to a separate document and dig through that to figure it out. So from a staff perspective and from ease of access for members of the public and, and property owners, we really think that this approach makes sense. Here is just an example of what that looks like. These are all of the chapters of the, of the existing SMP. And then it shows where those would move to within the Unified Development Code. So it would be a codified version of the, the shoreline regulations. Are there any questions about that reorganization, relocation? Okay. Okay, and now, so I just wanted to mention that, as I said before, we are looking at, including another public comment period on the changes that we, were not previously available for public comment, including the new shoreline residential policy and development regulation to address the cannery reach and other DOE changes recommended and required. And also, when we developed that clarification language for repair, maintenance, and replacement for our single-family docks, we wanted to be able to have the community take a look at that and weigh in and provide comments on, on the proposal. Also, there is going to be a draft codified version of the regulation, so you can see what that will, will look like, AMC 1972 shorelines. So we'll be putting that out at the same time as the draft too, and also the comprehensive plan shore, the shoreline element of the comprehensive plan. So all of those documents will be available for public review. And ultimately, what would end up happening is that the AMC 1972 shorelines and the shoreline element of the comp plan would end up getting adopted and that standalone shoreline master program document would go away. Okay, so timeline, what are the next steps? Very soon here, we will be releasing the second draft of the proposed amendments, the AMC, draft AMC 1972 shorelines with the codified format of the regulations and then the shoreline element of the comp plan. And we'll have a written public comment period publicized. And once that comment period ends, we'll take a look at those comments and bring them back to the Planning Commission and talk about those and make any needed revisions and get a Planning Commission recommendation to City Council. And finally, our goal is in April and May of this year, council consideration and adoption and transmittal to ecology for, for final approval. And just on a kind of fun, happy note, just wanted to report that the city applied for a shoreline master program competitive grant program from ecology. And we submitted an application for two different projects. One was a shoreline permit monitoring program. So we'll be taking, so, and we did get the grants for both, for both projects. So this will be a project where we'll be looking at past permits that have been issued and we'll be taking a look at, you know, if there is mitigation required, how is that mitigation doing? Was the permit issued in accordance with SMP? And just identifying ways that we can improve and strengthen our permit monitoring system to make sure that permits are issued in accordance with SMP and mitigation is installed and monitored over time. And then also a shoreline master program. And then also a Shoreline Master Program User's Guide that will hopefully help property owners through the process of developing plans to conform to the SMP. Okay, that's the end. So as I said, we've got some documents to put out, and we'll have a public comment period, and then we'll be back at Planning Commission. Is there any other information that the Planning Commission feels like you need or any other questions or concerns or comments?
I have a question about the stream buffers for the critical areas. I think that you were saying that the Critical Areas Code says you can have averaging, and then DOE was saying that you can't do that for the shoreline. Is that correct? So the averaging will stay for the Critical Areas Code, but not for shoreline? Is that correct?
Yeah, we will not incorporate by reference into the shoreline code, that section. And for the time being, that will remain in the code. Don may have something to add to that.
Thank you, Libby and Madam Chair. Staff is currently working on a couple of revisions to the Critical Areas Regulations, which includes, we're taking a very close look at that stream averaging. It's likely that's going to go away.
Okay, I was just kind of curious of why you could have it in one and you couldn't have it in the other. So I came, I kind of came in late on the critical areas, and so I honestly don't remember any of it.
Yeah, it's very likely that the Planning Commission will see some proposed amendments to the Critical Areas Ordinance within the next month.
Okay, and it sounds like the rationale is that, you know, if your property wasn't big enough, you might just get a net loss, and it's supposed to be a no net loss.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
It's Gary. On the extension of the comment period, are you looking at a 45-day comment period? Or, and when do you think that will kick in for the, to begin? And what do you say is an end date?
We were thinking 21 days, public comment period ending on, I think we'll go out and publish, sorry, I'm turning around, looking at my calendar. We're thinking of publicizing that on the 16th of February. So that would be one, two, three, March 9th or March 16th would be the end of that comment period.
Okay, I was just wondering if that is sufficient considering the complexity of the document. By the way, congratulations on the document. I've done these things, you did a monster, wonderful job.
Yeah, thank you, it was very good.
So, but I was just wondering if 21 days is sufficient?
To dovetail into Gary's comments, Madam Chair, I apologize for not asking for permission to speak, but if we could, if we could have an opportunity in another meeting to kind of talk about staff's rationale for wanting to consolidate all of these plans into one document, I can understand the benefits that you mentioned for the public. However, comma, you know, these documents, as they become larger, the review process becomes even longer now. I mean, we're pushing like 10 years or so on this SMP now. I know there's a periodicity for review on the Comprehensive Plan as well. I'm just wondering if staff has given any thought to that and how they'll mitigate these things getting stretched out in, you know, for infinity, but for another time.
If I might, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I recommend that if you have some conversation items, discussion items, that staff come back to the February 23rd meeting and have those conversations so that we can, you know, further understand the Planning Commissioners' concerns, discuss those, and hopefully provide you with all the information you need so that in March, everybody's prepared to make a recommendation to the City Council so that it in fact doesn't linger in space for a long time.
Yeah, and if I could just add on to that, the draft codified version and the shoreline element are, they are already drafted, so it wouldn't be another period to finish those up. And they are just bringing over the existing language in the SMP. So there wouldn't be any change between the two documents. It's just formatting essentially. So we wouldn't anticipate, you know, that require, yes, they are more documents for the public to review, but it's the same substantive type language in the documents, if that makes sense.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Martin.
I would just like to say a couple things. First of all, congratulations on getting two grants. That's great news, and it doesn't happen easily. And then to Mr. Miesner, I think congratulations on Libby's presentation. And very thorough, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Miesner.
Thank you. Yes, I think Libby did a fantastic job. I think it would be reasonable to come back on the 23rd and have a discussion. And Libby, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're going to have the next version, version 2 of the SMP ready with all the regulatory measures and the comp plan, the way it's going to look by then?
Yes, we should have that, so we can certainly introduce that and show everybody what that will look like at that meeting.
I think that's a good idea, and then we can have the discussion on the different documents.
Sounds good.
We have a couple of other things for the 23rd as well, so it'll be a good meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sure.
This is a question for Mr. Miesner or maybe Ms. Grange. And I'm sorry to go back in time to it, but as I look at your graphic and we prepare to wrap up, proposed amendment number 3, the one that addresses Lake Erie, adding the, let's see, adding the orange. So what does that, that translates to?
Conservancy.
Conservancy. Yeah, does that conservancy still fall within the ACFL boundaries?
Yes.
Okay, and this might be a follow-up for a later time, but what's the, in proximity, what's the nearest residential dwelling or structure to that conservancy? I'm just curious about that, because I look at a different map, and there's a number of buildings, I don't know if they're full-on houses or if they're barns. There's quite a few structures that are in that vicinity. I was just curious what impact those might have to the people that are already there.
Mrs. Chair.
Oh, yeah. Yes, Ms. Grange.
Thank you. So I will, I will take a look into that more closely, but I, my understanding is that this issue came up because somebody was proposing to build a house there. And so I think it's only covering one property, but I will double-check and bring that information back.
And so the question that this will lead to is what, and I can probably look this up myself, if that's the case, please, please tell me. But what would, what would make that a conservancy then and not shoreline residential if there are in fact residential units there?
You know, that's a great question. There are various criteria that you're supposed to look at when designating an area, and I'm going to assume that we, we did look at that criteria over a year ago, so I'm going to have to refresh my memory and.
Yeah, that's great. I was just, as you were looking, as we were discussing the proposed changes up in Gwemyss, I was looking through what some of the criteria were for shoreline residential. And as I looked down at the lake, I was curious why they were being treated differently. And I'm sure that you guys are all over it, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Miesner.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Curtis. We looked at that very thoroughly. And as Libby mentioned, there was a permit that came through with new home construction out there. The way we looked at it was the adjacency of the ACFL and the importance of protecting the ACFL in the shoreline, and therefore, the interpretation made by the director was that it would be a conservancy at that time. And so we're continuing that on through this process.
Great, thank you.
Great job, everyone.
Any other comments by the Commissioners? Was there any public on the call, or, I don't, it's not called a Zoom, I guess?
Yeah, this, this meeting was not advertised as a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
It was a work session, so.
Okay. Any other business, Mr. Miesner?
Madam Chair, I think that concludes our business for the evening.
All right, well, thank you, Libby. Very good presentation, and let's adjourn the meeting. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone, thank you.